Today is Tuesday, July fifteenth. The board is in session, all three commissioners are present. We also have with us, identify yourself for your.
Ryan Lane, Ada County Procurement.
Deborah Phillips, Ada County Operations.
John Blake, Perimeters.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Tim Colley, Treasurer's Office.
Robin's waiting for chairman.
Nathan Pierce, Hub International.
Lisa Donovan, Hub International.
Josh Brown, Perimeter.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Perimeter.
Hi to you guys.
You heard boy, you in the clerk's office?
Ethmont, Treasurer.
All right, thank you. Now, Perk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Hearing none.
Okay, the first item we have on the, on the agenda is the appointment of Jim Rowley to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire twelve, twenty-two, twenty-six. This is a, an individual is taking the, we had a resignation, and he's going to fill the unexpired term of the resignation. Any question or discussion on this appointment? I will accept a motion.
I'll move to appoint Jim Rowley to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy, term to expire twelve, twenty-two, twenty-six.
I second the motion.
All right, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we have some unfinished business to take care of, that will require a motion.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. What's the dates?
(laughing). Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have a couple items under unfinished business for your consideration this morning, the first of which is final ranking award recommendation of RFP two-five-zero-two-seven, the Ada County Emergency Management Type Three Incident Management Team Project.
Can you say that again? Fast.
Not without twisting my tongue.
Okay, go ahead.
We were prepared to come to you with an award recommendation today, but we received a protest from early alert in response to a recommendation to award letter that was sent to our proposers, therefore we would like to retable the award recommendation to the July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting for further consideration. And in the meantime, we'll meet with you soon to discuss this protest that they sent in.
Okay. All right, any question or discussion? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-five-zero-two-seven to July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, in order to consider a protest filed in that case.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second item under unfinished business is the final ranking award recommendation for RFP two-five-zero-five-eight, the Ada County Employee Benefits Consultant. And we were also prepared to come to you today with the final ranking and award recommendation, but we received a protest from Propel Insurance in response to our recommendation to award letter that was sent to our proposers. Therefore, we'd like to retable this project as well to the July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting for further consideration. And in the meantime, we'll have an opportunity to meet with the board to discuss this protest. And this is their protest letter.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to table this till the twenty-second of July.
I move to table RFP two-five-zero-five-eight until the twenty-second of July Open Business Meeting.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, under new business, we have a public hearing for a couple of orders of annexation. I'll open the public hearing on approval of the Order of Annexation of G W C Capital LLC into the Eagle Fire District. Any question or comments from anyone in the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the approval of Order of Annexation and accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the Order of Annexation of GW Capital into the Eagle Fire District.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I'll open the, or open the public hearing on the approval of the Order of Annexation of GW Ca- Capital LLC into the Star Fire District. Any, any comment or issues from any in the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the approval of Order of Annexation of G W C Cap into the Star Fire District and accept a motion.
I move to approve the annexation of G W C Capital LLC into the Star Fire District.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, Bob!
Yes, morning Commissioners. Under our new business, we have one item, and that is the opening of bid two-five-zero-six-three, the Ada County Courthouse Information Desk Remodel two thousand twenty-five. And Robin's going to bring up our bond fire procurement, and if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
All righty.
All righty. We received just one bid response for this project, and today we'll be looking at the name of that bidder and a total bid amount, which will be the base bid, plus an additive alternate for three electronics sit-stand stations in lieu of a built-in desk. And there will also be a twenty-five thousand dollar owner contingency in that amount as well. This spreadsheet should be opening up here in a second. And there's our bidder, it's E K C Incorporated. And they have a total bid amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And we'll need to have some time to take a look at this bid and see if it meets all of our administrative requirements. And we'd like to request that this be tabled for award to the July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of bid number two-five-zero-six-three to July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have six catering permits and two new licenses. Any question or issues on any of the catering permits or licenses? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the six catering permits and the two new licenses as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have with us clerk's office.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm excited to update you on a, a event that's going on in our town that we're hosting, and that's the Election Center has a couple hundred election professionals from around the entire nation are here in Boise for their training and their, their classes. You might remember, this is what Trent and Saul graduated about a year, year and a half ago. It takes well over two years to get the certification, and here we are hosting a nine-day, nine-day course for those guys. They're over at the Boise Center, but the, the fun part is they're coming over to our Election Center tomorrow for a tour, so we'll get to show any and everybody that wants to come to the tour, kind of our, our new digs and shout out to Ops and Barrier Brothers. We're shutting down the remodel operation tomorrow at two o'clock so that we can safely walk people through without hammers and nail guns and all that good stuff, but.
Then we get to see Rebel?
They'll still see Rebel, there's still plenty going on in there. But it's fun for Ada County to be able to show them what we're doing, and we're going to pull out equipment and stage cages and some of the, the equipment and tools that we use and processes, and we can talk shop with some of the best in the nation, so that's tomorrow.
You're going to teach them how to do the ballot verifier?
We are showing them the ballot verifier, absolutely. Trent's going to run, run two groups through a, through a ten-minute demo, so we absolutely are.
Oh, oh, that's good. Okay, congratulations. Anything else you want to give us?
Business as usual, sir.
How many people are coming in from how far away?
Chairman, Commissioner, great question. The last courses I went to, there were well over two hundred attendees, and they were from all over the nation. California, Colorado represent really well in these classes, but they're from East Coast to West Coast. We know that at least sixty-two have RSVP for the tour as of now, so we could have up to a hundred that show up at our facility tomorrow, so.
You're going to teach California how to get the ballots counted before two weeks after the general election?
(laughing). There are things we can teach the states you just mentioned.
Can't argue that, sir.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the Claims Journal. I, I reviewed that, I'll accept the motion.
I will authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal, dated July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We have personnel actions. Any question or discussions on any of the personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have a couple change orders, Arba Weed Pest and Mosquito Abatement Facility for the Val-Taike project. I assume this is a leftover, correct?
Yes, it's done. Project is finished, this is the Yannis contingency that will come back to the budget, this is Arba funds for that project.
Okay, well, any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve change order number one, is listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have change order number one, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Court Services Bureau Window Replacement, a decrease of twelve hundred and twenty-four dollars. Again, I guess that's leftover, or it's just done, then. Uninspected and approved.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve change order number one to agreement number three-zero-two-two-nine as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we have our distinguished treasurer with us today, Ms. Bev Mon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our update this morning is our most recent month-end report, that'd be for June, and that I'll hand it off to Tim Klein. Does anyone need a copy?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
We didn't have a whole lot of activity for June, but there's a few things we can kind of talk about. One of them is, we, I think I had mentioned it last time I was here, was our distribution will be occurring this month from our tax collection, so we had a total tax collection of about two hundred and fifty-two million that was distributed. The calculations were done, the distribution hasn't happened yet, but it will. And so of that, about fifty-one million will be added here to our investment portfolio. Of course, that's going to go into the L G I P, and that's going to, you know, increase the amount greatly into our L G I P. The L G I P is somewhat vulnerable because we have so much money in there, and if the Fed lowers the rates, then because of the type of investments that are held there, if the, if the rates drop dramatically, or they drop over the course of a year, you know, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred basis points, just depends what the Fed ends up doing, that's going to drop our yield, so if you, in fact, while we're on the front page, if you just look at the L G I P there in the very top, in the summary, you'll see that the current yield to maturity is about four point three-five-six. And then if you go down to the last one, the money market, you can see the money market now is dropping, it's at four point one-four-seven. And so the reason that's happened, and it's sort of happened gradually since the last reduction in the Fed funds rate, which is a fifty basis point cut just prior to the election. And so you may recall, if you look at the market value of that money market, we had upwards of seventy million, you know, six months ago, something like that. And now we're down to fourteen, because as we start to see that drop, we began to move that into slightly longer duration assets like the L G I P, so we can get a little bit more yield. So we're, we're watching that closely, and, you know, maybe more will come out. The CPI came out this morning, it was pretty close to the estimate, it's still elevated. And so the Fed's mandate is to keep, keep it at two percent. It came in at two point seven, which is a thirty-five percent higher than their target. And so I don't think, despite the pressure being put on the Fed Chairman, that we'll see those drop at the end of the month. And of course, the, the next meeting won't be, they don't, won't have one in August, and they'll have one in September, so we may not see anything till mid-September on that. So that's good for the portfolio in that we'll continue to have the higher yield. If you go to page five, you'll see that we're consistent, we got a total, if you look at the totals column on the left, nine point one million, and this is our ninth month of our fiscal year, so we're right about one million. And we should continue right along that trajectory. Next month, we'll have a, a pretty big influx. So if you, if you look at the columns there, and you go to the L G I P, you'll see that the L G I P column right kind of toward the middle, nearly half of what we earn is from the L G I P because there's so much money in there, and, and that's the vulnerability I was referring to, where if the, if the rates drop dramatically, you know, we, we need to be considering, you know, what are we going to do with that money? Do we want to extend it out in duration and try to capture some more yield? So we're, we're looking at that closely, we're monitoring that. Other than that, we really haven't had any activity, no maturities, there was no purchases in June, and so it's just kind of steady she goes.
Okay. Any questions or issues with any of the report from the board? Go ahead.
We, so, some of this, like the L G I P are required, we're required to do certain things, right?
Yeah, we don't have.
Or limit it, I guess.
We don't have a limit, it's just on what we can put in the L G I P, but we, fixed income, yeah, there's just really, counties and government in general are required to invest in, in very secure, safe, liquid assets, and that really limits what we can do. Fortunately, in the environment we've been in the past couple years, for the county, the yields have been good, you know, the Fed's been concerned about inflation, and inflation's taken off, so those, those fixed income measurements have yielded higher for us. But we, I mean, we do get some exposure through L G I P to corporates, so corporate bonds, and, and that's why we see a little bit higher yield. If you, if you looked at the L G I P, the duration of those, it's going to track pretty close to like a three-month treasury asset. I think almost ninety-eight percent of everything that's in the L G I P is six months or less. And so if the Fed does lower rates, and they do that, twenty-five basis points, twenty-five basis points, it's going to give us a little bit more time to earn yield before it meets up with, but it will, it will get down, just like the money market did. So that's a conundrum, that's a challenge that we face, and we're really kind of limited in what we can do, and we're, we're sort of victims of what the Fed does. And, and the, the ten years, you know, what, what happens to those when the, when the Fed lowered rates the last time? Typically, you see all across the yield curve, rates drop down, the ten-year went up because the bond market didn't agree with what the Fed was doing. If the bond market thinks the Fed's making a mistake, you may not see those come down. And so that's disappointing for people looking for a drop in mortgage rates, but it gives us an opportunity to redeploy the, the money that we have in the, the low yielding into some more long-term duration assets.
Mortgage rates pretty much follow the ten-year.
They do.
Yeah.
That's the proxy for what the mortgage rates are going to be.
Yeah, so we don't know that, but the Fed rate will come down, I predict.
In September or July.
I think it'll probably be September.
Yeah.
Because they're just getting over from, from all the expense on that new federal service building.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Couple billion dollars. Yeah, all right, any other questions? All right, thank you, appreciate it, yeah. Okay, anything else, Trip?
That's it for our office.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, now we have approval of the minutes for the Open Business Meeting, seven-one and Board of Equalization here, seven-one and seven-two. Any questions or issues? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have the Western Idaho Fair, we have a, one concessionary agreement. Any questions? I will accept the motion.
To approve the Exploited Western Idaho Fair Agreement, Agreement as listed on the agenda, authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have six Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements. Any question or issue on any of these agreements? None, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have three agreements. Any question or issues on any of the agreements?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to remove the first agreement listed on the agenda, I would like to, it spends more time in considering it, so just remove it from the agenda for the, remove it from the agenda for the time being.
And could be brought up later, okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we have two agreements to, to approve. Any question or issue on the agreements?
So for the second one, regarding jail pod seat catwalk improvements, is that connected to the big remodel we're doing now, or is that sort of a separate maintenance component?
It's a separate component over in Pod C itself, it's a, we're doing a structural analysis on the catwalk business, and they're looking at extending a piece across that makes it a little safer for the deputies that are in that, in that section of there to do their job.
Okay. All right, I'll accept the motion.
For the two agreements. I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
B and C.
B and C.
I second the motion.
Yeah. Okay, motion is to approve item B and C on the agreements. Any questions or issues? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up before the board's vote? Hearing none? Where's Aaron? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on the record. Well, good morning. Today is the 15th day of July. The Ada County Commission is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us...
John Blake, Paramedics.
John Blake, Paramedics, an IT guy. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, no changes to the agenda. First item up on the agenda is the approval of the Claims Journal. Any questions or issue with the Claims Journal? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the EMS Claims Journal dated July 11, 2025.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Actions. Any questions or issues on Personnel Actions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes for the Emergency Medical Services District Meeting of July 1. Any questions or issues? Hearing none, all will accept a motion.
I move to approve the EMS District Meeting Minutes for July 1, 2025.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Now with the EMS update. No, we're going to have to carry you back a little bit because we're kind of short on time. Okay, no, take all the time you need.
I only have a few things for you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Our annual mandatory department meeting is tomorrow. Everybody's going to come together. We're going to serve breakfast, and we've got a good agenda lined up for them. We're going to give them what many of them know about all the things that are going on in the department, but in a concentrated and potent way.
As for breakfast?
Pardon me?
As for breakfast?
There will be breakfast served at the meeting. And at the end, we have a number of the extended or the longer service awards, so plaques. And then we'll do Employees of the Year, and we're going to do a group picture, everybody in uniform. We do one every year.
Tough to do a meeting like that because you still got calls coming in, so...
So some people can come while they're on duty, still subject to 911, and the meeting will be recorded so the people that can't attend in person then can see. So everybody will get another bite at that apple.
Well, great. Well, that's a good meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
You're going to have one of the new painted vehicles yet?
I don't think so, not yet. We, the last I knew, we were still just those two from the factory. And then we were waiting, I think, on the third bid locally for the ones we're going to do. We're not going to do all of them. The older ones, obviously, we're not going to do. But for that round that have already, that are already in our parking lot, I just don't know when that third bid is coming. Let's see. I had one of our providers come to me after having a pretty difficult call with an idea for bicycle helmet awareness. And so if you're out at the fair on both of the Sundays and stop by our stand, you're also going to see a separate desk with a couple of our paramedics and some signage. We may be partnering with one or both of our hospital systems for this, what could be an ongoing initiative for bicycle helmet awareness. So somebody's difficult call has turned into action that we are supporting. I'm happy about that.
Can we have some free helmets there, or what are we doing?
That's what we're looking for. I've left that to them. I think there are a number of places where free helmets are available, and so we would provide a list to folks that would be a non-preferred list, something that they could go and look at that would be a place that you could find free helmets. I think that there are lots of those places. So that's part of the partnership with the hospitals too because I think they have inns for that kind of stuff as well. And I think the only other thing that I have is that after several kerfuffles and delays, I think we're finally on track for Narcan Leave Behind rollout early next month. Right? So that was good news. The only other thing I could think of, I'm adding one more thing, and that is we sent three folks north last week for the memorials. I understand that those services went very well. And obviously, we're happy to send people to support the folks we knew and all the people that attended.
Well, good.
That's all I have. That's all I have for you.
All right, any questions? All right. Well, thank you. Have your breakfast tomorrow. Tell your employees we appreciate the service.
Absolutely.
I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any other issues to be brought before the board? Hearing none, word's earned.